I don't remember the future. She actually kicked the computer.
That's that's it, yeah.
Okay.
So, the background is um that there was a it was a dispute over interpretation of some language and about part-time employees and it kicked off a whole consideration of, you know, maybe we need to amend provisions of the of the ordinances dealing with employment practices. And the more we look at this, the question came up, and I think Kevin mentioned it before. Is actually, uh, it's not necessary that this be in front of the the town council at all. Many other towns, Greenwich, Darien, Westport, don't have employment practice rules in their ordinances. And so, uh, my challenge to Nick is to say, how can we get the employment practices rules out of our ordinances so we don't have to review them? Because what happens in practices that when when there's a change through it maybe bargaining agreement could could be a change or another policy change and and so it comes to the town council sort of the fait accompli, the the board of selectmen have adopted a certain practice and implemented it, and we have to go and make sure that the ordinance conforms to whatever they've done. Why add that stat? So, uh, I'm here to ask you to support the proposal of basically asking Nick to, uh, hey, Kim?
Hello, hi.
To basically review, uh, chapter forty-four, which is where these provisions are, and, uh, try to see how much of this can be moved out of the ordinance. The first step, of course, would be to memorialize these provisions elsewhere by action of the you could talk about that process, Nick, if you want.
Sure, sure, yeah. So, um, and I'll be brief. I know we're just talking conceptually here, so I'm not going to get into the weeds at all. But Tom, you're right. I mean, when we look at some of our neighboring municipalities, we don't see a section, a chapter in the the code, the code of ordinances dedicated to outlining how the town uh, is going to operate its employment structure from a policy standpoint. And a lot of those towns, um, some place that authority to determine what those policies are actually going to be. Um, some, like Weston, puts that authority in the hands of the full board of selectmen, like is the case here in New Canaan. Our charter says the board of selectmen is the 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 authority who has the uh, power to both do appointments, so hirings and terminations, uh, so firings of all employees. Uh, but some towns put that uh, authority in the first selectman or in the personnel director. So, we were initially tasked with looking at chapter forty-four to see to Tom's earlier point, what can come out just from a baseline of what's redundant and what conflicts with changes in the law or changes in our collective bargaining agreements or some other legally effective document or law. So that's what Rebecca has done. As we sit here today, we have a condensed version of chapter forty-four that we think if the town, if the council wants to remove this ordinance, this chapter, that can occur, except this condensed version would have to be memorialized in a board of selectmen policy uh, by resolution. So, yeah, I think the town council um, can move forward with a repeal of of chapter four effectively of almost the entire chapter. If if that's the inclination here and to put all of the responsibility in the hands of the board of selectmen to set the employment policies uh, through an ordinance, or I'm sorry, through a resolution. The one thing that needs to stay in an ordinance, and Kevin, we chatted about this a little bit um, last week, I think, is the last section, and Tom, you point this out even in tonight's agenda, the section on the OPEB trust. Um, the state law that enables municipalities to set up their own retirement systems, so to speak, for their employees. Um, the state law allows municipalities to do that. Um, but it needs to be as an actual ordinance that's been passed by the legislative body. So, at the very bare minimum, I think we need to keep that section in um, the ordinances somewhere. Um, but otherwise, we think it's legally permissible to shift that role um, to the board of selectmen. And yeah, we would want to have that all lined up. Obviously, we would need to know before the town council does anything in terms of taking out portions of the existing chapter forty-four, I would want, from a legal perspective, to have a comfort level that the board of selectmen has already um, adopted a policy that's going to capture what's being lost from chapter forty-four.
And Nick, I asked you, is that required by Connecticut statute, what you just said about the uh, OPEB trust? Did it require Connecticut statute?
That is, yeah, that's required by Connecticut statute.
You'd otherwise the charter best of what it means will be authority to create and recommend retirement plans. So.
Well, not to be too full, I would also man- also mention
chapter forty-four was originally adopted in April nineteen sixty-four by the board of selectmen, which was the legislative body at the time.
Yeah, there you go. There was a Yeah, so. Yeah, that was a while ago. So, just to be clear, Nick, one of the options on the table is to because right now the the shortened version that uh, Rebecca put together has like twenty sections in it and it's five pages or whatever, but you're you're suggesting a possibility that most of that could actually be shifted out. Uh, and we may only be left with the OPEB provision or other things that are legally required to be in order.
That's correct, Tom. And at this point, the only thing that we've determined to be actually legally required to remain as an ordinance is that OPEB trust section.
Could I ask for some background on this? As to how this came about and who requested it?
Well, yeah, we commented a little, I think, maybe before you you signed on, uh, a question came up in the board, in the board of selectmen as to whether part-time employees had to be approved uh, by the board of selectmen and that that conversation led to an analysis of of provisions in the charter as well as this chapter forty-four of the ordinance. And so, but as part of that conversation, it was pointed out that there were a lot of things about chapter forty-four that had to be updated. And so, in looking beyond, looking into that as to which provisions, why and whatever, it occurred to us in in studying the history of this is that most towns don't even have a chapter forty-four. And so, we started thinking about, is this necessary? Uh, and and a lot of what town council would do in revising chapter forty-four would be actually just rubber stamping what uh, the board of selectmen do through through Cheryl Cheryl Jones. Um, we don't, we're not really in the loop.
Who requested the change, though?
I am.
You did?
No, I I'm I'm requesting that we, uh, and may maybe others would support me on this, is that we is that we skinny down, take most of chapter forty-four off of our plates uh, as as a town council and leave it to the board of selectmen.
Well, for the background, though, ten years ago, uh, Cheryl tried to begin to repeal chapter forty-four, and then yet the ethics board studied this and realized how conflicting it was. The town council of F four, when did the F four recommended repeal? Four years ago.
Two or three years ago.
So, and and the record recommendation of Bay to see, let's try to reveal this and they get it done. So, go back, right, several years.
I mean, I think, sorry to jump in, but I think one of the important points, too, is that there are provisions in chapter forty-four that conflict with collective bargaining agreements, could conflict with state statute. And that, and so that's a concern that we currently have in ordinance, regardless of sort of the origin of the request, that that is conflicting with other governing, legally governing documents. And so not only are they um, would we be more consistent with other towns, but we would be consistent with our collective bargaining agreements and state statutes. And that way, every single time there's a change to one of those legally binding things, um, it doesn't have to come before us to change the ordinance to to not be contrary to that, if that makes sense. So that's, I think, to me at least, one of the most important reasons why we should take some action with respect to this ordinance, because it conflicts with other legally binding.
But the, but the entire ordinance is being changed, or is it just a portion? I didn't receive and I didn't look up the entire ordinance to know if this is one tenth, one hundredth of the ordinance in its entirety. Because there have been issues with hiring and I just don't want to make that situation worse.
Um, I think what we're, like Nick just said, what Rebecca had done was take out anything that was contrary to collective bargaining agreements, state statutes, pared it down to what was not covered by that. So our two options today are to take that edited version and amend the ordinance, or to take everything but the OPEB provision and move it to the board of selectmen to pass a resolution on those topics. Nick, correct me if I'm wrong. That's how I'm
That's correct.
We could do one of two things. We could keep this ordinance on our books with everything that's not otherwise covered by legally binding documents. And then the potential still exists that we would have to amend provisions that we retain if a state statute is passed or a collective bargaining agreement changes one of those provisions in the operation of it. Or we could move it to the board of selectmen and just keep what the state law requires we keep as an ordinance, which is the OPEB provision. Does that make sense, Christina?
Yeah, would you be moving to have a vote on it tonight at the town council meeting?
What we would, what we would, I'm hoping we can do is 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 well, maybe you've already said this, Nick, but I I'd like to have, I'd like to have language to take to the town council, not tonight.
Okay.
Nice, but language that maybe Nick could draft so, uh, uh, that would reflect the process we just discussed. And then we would adopt it at a council level later on. But tonight, if we could give conceptual guidance that, you know, this cleanup is what we want to do, uh, and then he can come back with, uh, not only the the language town council would adopt, but also with with some sense of a plan with what steps we would have to go through. This is a simple outcome, but it's not a simple process. So if he could just sort of outline what that process would look like, then, uh, we'd we'd uh, come back to it in the future.
Is there a way to make a one pager that says, we used to do this and now this would happen? Like what's changing and what's like?
There are twelve rules under chapter forty-four. OPEB trust is number twelve, but updated in ten year, two thousand and ten. So you basically tell me repeal rules one through uh, eleven, and we're, you're gonna leave from twelve, which is
But as far as like
You have to understand, all this will be replaced by a board of selectmen policy.
So logistically, operationally, who hires, you know, where does an interim come in? When does an interim become a firm? Like, is there?
I think, I think your question is a great one, and I think the interesting part of doing this exercise is that all of those things have resided with the the selectmen and the board of selectmen and first selectmen. So, I don't know, have we actually been following what the ordinance says, or have we been doing what we're kind of proposing we do?
It conflicts so much. And quite honestly, ten years ago, Cheryl really went to having employee handbooks be the board governance and she said, employee gets an employee handbook. Those are kept up to date, and you know, for the last ten years, really, trying to make the ordinance conform to the whole employee handbook policy change. So, we've been out of compliance, out of lack.
Right.
You could argue that, given the pace of government.
Well, where where are the, is the employee handbook incorporated into the rules somehow, the town rules, like?
So the employee handbook is for the managers. Then we have four unions, so they each have a contract. And then we have part-time employees who also have a policy. So we have many different groups covered under many different policies. That makes sense.
One, that's going to start the rules of the town. Are they supposed to be incorporated somehow to the rules of the town, or is it just referred to?
Well, it's referred to in the handbook, understanding that the board of selectmen is the hiring and appointing authorities. So any hires have to go through the board of selectmen, and there's a process that we follow before we get those hires to them.
Well, we would rely on Nick to be sure that there are rules.
Right.
And that they would be legally embodied in the right place. All we're taking up tonight, that place is not an ordinance. Uh, we were talking about how hard it is to keep the ordinances in conformity with what's really going on. And if you look at the uh, quite candidly about the pace of government and how often we change roles on committees and everything, uh, it's almost impossible to keep this ordinance in conformity, constantly updated. You know, you'd have two or three meetings a year just dedicated to that, and there's no real purpose to that. Because the town council doesn't set appointment policy, so why do it? And it's not done in any of the other similar towns, Greenwich, Darien, Westport.
According to rule eleven, all regular full-time employees should be referred to enroll members of the town civil defense.
Right, there you go.
That is definitely updated, yeah.
Yeah.
Was there a crosswalk document? I don't see anything like with the crosshairs and the
I believe Rebecca circulated that. I can look for it.
Because I opened it on here, and now it says I can't open it as I need office, and I can't seem to access the files that go with our town council meetings. I don't know if that's an iPad issue or.
Well, things have been circulated in the past, but uh, what I would suggest is you just look at that. That's what Kevin was reading from. It's the current ordinance. And the only thing that would survive in the ordinance is the last provision, section forty-nine.
So everything
So you don't need to look at the red line.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't go away. It would go into a resolution with the board of selectmen. And that's, I think, what Nick is saying, is that we have to make sure that resolution is passed before we take this away.
So, so Nick would create, so I understand, Nick would create language that covers what is being removed, and then we, as the town council, appeal one through eleven and that, and once, and we move, and we remove this time. So that I know Rebecca's secretary, the employment lawyer that works personally. So Nick would work with Rebecca to draft that, or selectmen do that. Okay, and you would do that. And I'd be noticed, like the real estate. But you can see, one of the, one of the reasons why we attacked this a couple of different times, but we never considered lighting it off. You know, we try, we look at, we're writing it, and we're massaging it. This, to me, is the cleanest and easiest way to do this. It's just, you're right. It's, it's pretty clear after you read through it. If it's covered in the employee handbook, then, you know. Yeah, it's, it's obvious.
I think, too, if I could just get this, it says office can't open it, it has to be installed. I don't know if everyone's having this problem, but like I can't see them marked up. This is not like this, like this is all blank.
Oh.
It says open office. I don't know, maybe I can Yeah, I totally did that already, but.
Oh. We need some extra copy. I don't have hard copies, right? We have to get that right. Uh, Tom needed to, I'm gonna make a couple copies, huh?
Yeah, that's right.
And I'll ask for that for a second. Maybe one hard copy. Company in the name. I know I got two. Two? Say yes, huh? No, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tucker.
Yeah.
So you had a question, you were curious. If if we don't do anything, you ask. I I just asked, uh, on the side, what's the harm in doing nothing?
Charlie, well, I think Nick and I, I think
I I was looking at Nick.
Yeah, Nick.
And I'm not trying to be a, I was just thinking, you know.
No, it's a, it's a good question, and I think it sets us up for some legal problems in the future. I think you can talk to that if you'd like.
Yeah, so, um, there's, we can do nothing. Um, and we don't recommend that because there are a couple, um, bits that should be brought current and stated that are not currently stated in the ordinance or elsewhere. So that's number one, to bring things up with our actual like for consistency with how Cheryl and the board of selectmen have basically been operating the employment policies for as as long as they have been. Uh, but number two, it also removes, like Hillary said, the conflicts with other collective bargaining agreements, other um, applicable laws and regulations. And that's not to say that just because we have an ordinance that conflicts with other laws that we're immediately in some sort of trouble. I mean, those ordinance provisions, if they conflict with some other legal authority that has higher weight, they're just not effective provisions of an ordinance. But that still doesn't mean that we want technically illegal provisions of an ordinance on our books. It it just lends to more confusion. Um, chapter forty-four, the way it's been set up for whatever it's been sixty, seventy years now, um, contemplates uh, I, by my count, like five or six different types of employees. It's just very confusing. And obviously, we're having this conversation, the board of selectmen's been having the conversation. So, um, bottom line, we can do nothing. Um, but as your lawyer, I have some things that I would still want added in, even if you weren't going to remove chapter forty-four. Um, and it just makes things a lot cleaner and easier for the town to actually implement and operate consistently across all of their employees.
And we need, and we need to update our employee handbook, and we don't want to do that until we make a decision as to
I just wanted to move all that.
And I have a question. What would we add into forty-four that you would recommend we kept forty-four?
So, um, Rebecca took a closer, you know, more microscopic look at at those items and understanding this was going to be a more higher level concept. She had a conflict tonight, so she's not here. But I I think one of the one of the bigger questions is clarifying specifically who is at will versus, um, who is just cause in terms of uh, terminations.
And that would be added to forty-four?
It should be clarified if nothing else is going to happen to forty-four. Yep.
We were to, it could also be incorporated as part of a resolution that the board of selectmen would.
Absolutely. So th- that is there's, there's two ways this can go. I think, Hillary, you outlined them pretty clearly earlier, but um, number one is we keep chapter forty-four um, more or less, well, I guess there's three things. We do nothing, but we still, we can't do nothing. Number one, we add in at 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 a bare minimum to clarify this at-will issue. Everything else stays the same. Option two is we take everything out of chapter forty-four altogether, except for that trust section, and then move um, all of the applicable and relevant policies into a board of selectmen resolution. And then I guess, um, number three would be not moving into a board of selectmen structure, but retaining chapter four forty-four, slimming it down so that we remove inconsistencies and then adding in that at-will clarification. So, I I think those are the three options. We do nothing except make a small tweak to clarify at-will. Um, or we cut most of chapter forty-four and move this all into a resolution of the board of selectmen? Or we trim down chapter forty-four significantly with that at-will clarification?
Nick, can I ask you a question? Could you give us an example? When you say at-will, are you talking about hiring practices as well as termination, or are you?
That only, I mean, that that applies for dismissals for termination. So, um, it it's, you know, you could either be dismissed at-will of your employer, or you can be dismissed for just cause. Those are the two.
Does, does this uh, ordinance touch upon hiring?
Yes, it does.
And you're thinking also of amending it?
I'm
Hiring.
On the question.
I mean, there's been an issue at the board of selectmen level as to, um, having uh, the first selectmen present the candidates that are being hired as temporary employees as well as permanent employees. And there's been this argument back and forth between the two, whether or not it's it's permissible and whether or not it's appropriate. So I want to make sure that we act on this with clarity and with, without any loopholes where it's a decision that's made by the board of selectmen and not just unilaterally by one individual. So I just don't want to see this amended to to turn into something worse.
Nothing is done with one individual. I don't know where you get that impression.
Um, well, you have said it at the board of selectmen meetings many times, Kevin, that the first selectmen has the authority to hire at-will or hire temporary employees without passing their approval from the, from the board of selectmen. And that has been the argument at, as of late, that has that has come to pass.
But is the first selectmen has, doesn't hire anybody. And the department heads, of the three hundred part-time employees we had last year, like, um, forty or fifty were presented to the board of selectmen, the recreation department, and all the other ones weren't. So they're all hired by the departments, and the first select has no role in that. I don't sign off. HR signs off in terms of giving them, uh, you know, their, uh, at-will employee handbook, right? And but otherwise, first select has had no role. The HR director brings these to the board of selectmen. So.
Well, there have been hires uh, from in, what is it, um, interim or temporary employees into full-time employees. That has also been a conversation on the board of selectmen meetings.
Can I just add to that, Christina? So, um, everything flows from the charter as we know. So what the charter says pretty plainly is that the board of selectmen is the authority for both hiring and terminating town employees, period. Without distinction of what types of employees, whether they're temporary interim, it says, the board of selectmen hires and fires town employees, period. And then chapter forty-four, which we're talking about tonight, which is an ordinance that's under the authority of the town council to pass or amend. Chapter forty-four similarly um, designates the board of selectmen as the appointing authority, it calls it, but that in in the context of chapter forty-four, that means, again, the board of selectmen is the the body that has the authority as a group to hire and fire town employees without restriction or limitation on those types of employees. So to answer your question, if, um, let's just say that this, the town council was inclined to do away with chapter forty-four, with the exception of this trust section that has to stay there and say, okay, we want, instead of regulating this, because we're not really the frontrunners here, we don't really call the shots in terms of employee policies, it's the board of selectmen. So we want to give that power to the board of selectmen. Um, so, board of selectmen would pass a resolution that clarifies and says if, whether in fact the board of selectmen does have authority over anyone, or if the board, and that's the board of selectmen's decision, if they want to say, okay, we want to see every single hire, and they pass that resolution, then that's how they're going to operate. They're going to, they're going to have authority over every single employee. If they want to limit that in a board of selectmen policy and say, okay, you know what, for the seasonal hires, we don't need to see them. Um, we're just going to leave that to the department heads. That that's something that the board of selectmen can do, because they're the entity that has the overarching authority over all town employees, whether it's hiring or firing. So, I mean, the short answer is no, we're not changing that structure. It's always going to rest with the board of selectmen, and the board of selectmen is going to be the one to call the shots on precisely which proportion of town employees it actually wants to get on their agendas to approve.
So would it be possible to see the amendment that the board of selectmen would choose to write in reference to this change before we vote to remove or or revise the ordinance?
That would certainly be my recommendation. I think that's part of what Tom was suggesting just procedurally. If at at the end of our meeting tonight, it sounds like this committee at least is willing to recommend a a more robust repeal of forty-four, you keep the trust section in and revert the policies over to the board of selectmen. Yeah, I would not be comfortable recommending that without um, having already drafted a policy that I think the board of selectmen would need to adopt. The Board of Selectmen would need to adopt, um, in terms of. Covering any bit, anything that gets lost from chapter forty-four that I, that we think still, you know, deserves embodiment somewhere.
And can we make it so that any future changes to that new Board of Selectmen? I don't know what you call a rule or or policy, would need to be approved by the Town Council?
No. I don't think you can, you as a town council can, um. Put an obligation on the Board of Selectmen where there hasn't been some sort of express statutory authority granted to the legislative body for that purpose.
Okay. Okay.
Town Council approve?
Anything to do with the.
Oh, we would approve the repeal, you know, but we would only, we would only do that after Nick assures us and Cheryl and Kevin that. Everything's in order, our stuff is now redundant, and then we was removed.
Right.
But but you 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 can watch as a citizen to see what Nick drafts and and, you know, and and react to it, but. In all these other towns that we've looked at, they don't have, the the Town Council does not have as part of its role. To get involved in these disputes. You know, it's just, it's not part of amended.
This isn't a historical relic, relic. Because we didn't have provided for it like, if we're the ones at Town Council and no one ever thought delicious changes. So we're just kind of getting bothered. There is one critical issue, you know, employees who are currently. Yeah, what's the word?
At-will.
No. Are very concerned that that remain that way.
Yeah.
Well, they have a, they have a property right, right, but so that's the thing.
See, what what happened with the constitutional, uh, uh, ruling. Supreme Court ruling that said public employees have a retentive due process, right? But we maintain, I maintain, part-time employees who we hire, like in a lifeguard, and we want to fire them the next day because they turn out to be a drug addict. We don't have due process for those employees. I want all part-time employees to be able. Because a lot of other towns, all their employees are. And we're, we're kind of unusual in having all of our time employees be justified. But that's what we have.
But that's to say, though, for those current employees who are hired. Under this just cause umbrella, meaning, you know, there needs to be just cause for the town to fire them. Um, I think what Cheryl and Kevin are saying is that they're concerned that they're not gonna lose that, when they see the Town Council. Thinking about changing this ordinance that designates, at least for some of these employees, that they're just cause. They point to that and say, okay, there there is our safety belt, we know we're just cause because of that. So what I think they're suggesting is if this goes away, some employees might be concerned, oh, is there something, am I losing my just causability? And that's another reason why we want to see this embodied in a Board of Selectmen policy. So that we can say, no, that that's what you, that policy is just as effective under, under employment law in Connecticut. Having it somewhere is enough. So if we have, if we identify. Whoever we've had as just cause employees and whoever we've historically had as part-timers. If we set that out clearly in this Board of Selectmen policy that we're contemplating. Then those employees shouldn't, at least legally, have an issue with that.
So, I move that we turn this over to Nick and have him come back with recommendations for the process. For, um, embodying these, uh, chapter forty-four rules elsewhere by action of the Board of Selectmen. And that once, once all those. Once all that is, has taken effect, that we would then, we don't even need to decide that right now, but.
Yeah.
The the thought is that then once that's all complete, then we would repeal. All that we're legally able to, section forty-four. Exactly forty-four. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Maria, Kim, Mark.
I am here. I vote for it.
You're voting yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Got them all.
Yeah.
So we have just a few minutes, and so we have to be in the, uh.
No, we're gonna stay in this room.
We're gonna stay here.
I just have to log off of this one and log on to the new Zoom.
So to give Tucker time to do all that, I suggest that we, uh, yeah, Jern? Thank you. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, Nick.
Anytime, I think I know my marching orders, so we'll be in touch. And, uh, I think you guys are up to talk to, are you guys talking to Chris Hodgson next?
He's coming on next.
All right, good luck, enjoy, have a good night.
Nice.
I know you were attending revised, can you hear me, Christina? You're, you're.
Yes, I'm sorry, um.
I only, because this was with the agreement, I only sent the Zoom out. To people that told me they weren't gonna be here, so let me, um, send you the Zoom, you're gonna have to come off of this meeting and go on to the new Zoom.
Okay.
All right, so let me just send it to you, hang on one second.
You're not meeting now.
So Tucker, just to clarify, does that mean that, um. If I want to speak, I'm not gonna get lost among everybody else who's watching? Or who's joined the Zoom?
The only people that are joining by Zoom are you and Chris Hodgson, the attorney, is that your question?
No, yeah, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
And sure, let me just find it here.
That's what they call it. So it's available, um, for anybody to ask.
I'm gonna text you the login, okay?
Okay, bye-bye.
No, no, it's called a non.
So, information session.
It's an information session that, that only the Town Council pays.